Sometimes it's good to mute me, so I appreciate that. Okay, all right. Item number four is the OC Veterinarian Center, PA 2020-325. That site location is 2020, sorry, 1220 Bison Avenue, Suite A7. Again, if you want to comment on this item, it's 949-270-8165. Staff, you'll give a presentation, but the applicant is on Zoom, so we'll be able to ask questions through that means. Thanks, Patrick.
Good evening, Commission. Patrick Akis with the Planning Division. The item before you is a conditional use permit for a veterinary clinic. Shown here is the existing suite, which is within the Newport North Shopping Center. The former tenant was Soul Comfort, a retail use. Zooming out, the tenant space is shown here in orange. The property line of the shopping center is shown in red. Uses to the north and south are multifamily. To the east is the Bluff Shopping Center, and to the west are the industrial uses of Mini Storage and the local U.S. Post Office. The project is consistent with the general plan and zoning designations, which are commercial in nature. The project is a small-scale, full-service animal clinic, offering wellness exams, preventative care, vaccines, surgeries, and other services. It's mostly appointment-based. No animals would be kept overnight, except those in critical condition, and no animal boarding is proposed. Listed here are the intended hours of operation. To accommodate future flexibility, staff recommends the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. daily. Here is a look at the floor plan. The suite is approximately 3,400 square feet, and project implementation would not increase the square footage. The tenant improvement consists of repartitioning of walls and installation of equipment. In the upper right-hand corner, you'll see a door leading out to the back, which contains an onsite walk area. So that walk area is shown here in orange. Only clinic staff would walk the animals, and droppings would be picked up promptly, immediately after production. The walkers would not go on to the residential side, and as you can see, there is quite a bit of separation between the residences and the project. Here's a look from the residential side. So at the left, you'll see the rear of the project. At the right, the nearest home. In between, of course, you'll see the buffers. There's the drive aisle, the carport landscape, and an eight-foot-tall property wall. Just beyond the property wall is that walk area. Adequate parking is provided by a 269-on-surface parking lot, which results in four surplus spaces. In looking at the parking requirement, usually, animal clinics require one space per every 400 square feet. In this case, the project would be more intensive than this. It does have 10 staff and would assist multiple customers at a time. So the higher commercial rate of one space per 250 square feet is more appropriate to reflect the actual impact that the use will have. This would result in no change to parking demand from the existing retail use. Additional requirements apply for animal service, and the project complies with all of them. You'll see here that it's soundproofed, air-conditioned, fully enclosed, mitigated to prevent odors and noise. Grooming activities would only be medically related. Animal cremation is not allowed, and there will be no commercial boarding. Staff does recommend that you find the project exempt from CEQA and adopt the resolution to approve the project. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant team is online via Zoom.
Thank you, Patrick. I liked your little colored photos there with the animals. You did put a little extra work in there, so appreciate it. All right, questions with staff? Commissioners? I had one related to hours. I feel 6 o'clock's a little early. I'm sure the applicant had asked for those, but maybe when we talk to the applicant, we can suggest that he maybe keep those maybe till 8:00 or so, just so in case his business model changes and he doesn't want to come back to the Planning Commission to adjust those hours. It kind of covers him. I think that 8:00 is reasonable. I think people get off work a little late, or they could have a later animal-type issue that they need to bring their animal into. So I think that's something their business model may be interested in. So that's the only thing I had. Ex parte communications with Commissioner Rosin.
None.
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 None for me.
None for me either. Okay, I'll open the public hearing and allow the applicant to give some comments. Okay, we can see you.
Hi, I'm Janet Londa. I'm the architect for the project.
Great.
Hi, I'm Dr. Rajgarwal. I'll be the new resident there.
Perfect. All right, do you have anything you want to add to the staff's presentation or anything you'd like to discuss?
Yeah, I think that was a good point about the hours. I think initially, we will be limiting hours just because it does take time to start out the practice, and we can't afford multiple doctors initially. But after-hours or after-work hours are very important in our industry. So I think I like that proposal, and we will put some correction on that next time.
Great, great. Any questions to, yes, Commissioner Kettig?
Yes. When there is an overnight, post-surgical animal in there, do you have staff stay with them? Is somebody in there, or are they alone?
So how that is handled is, if only a patient that is stable enough, all the vitals are normal. Only then we will be keeping the animal in the clinic. If a patient is very critical, then we will offer for a staff to be with the animal, or it would be transferred to an ER clinic.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other Commissioner questions? Okay, I will...
Chair Wagenen.
Yes.
I know that he did consent to that additional condition, the hours, but if you could just confirm that he agrees to the other condition?
Sure, everything else that's listed on the conditions, are you okay with?
Correct.
Great, perfect. I'll open it to public comment in the chambers. And anyone on the phone? Any other comment from the applicant?
No, thank you so much.
Okay. And his staff, any comments to clarify anything? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission for discussion or for a motion. Commissioner Kleiman.
I am prepared to make a motion to approve this application as written, including your change on the hours, if everybody's part of that.
I think 8:00 works. Is that fancy, Commissioner? Or should we go to 9:00? I think 8:00 probably is reasonable.
I think 8:00 is reasonable.
Okay, perfect. And get a second, please.
I'll make a second.
Great, I will call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations. I will move on to the next item. Item number five is the Tattoo Establishment Zoning Ordinance Update, PA 2020-030. The site location is citywide. Again, if you want to comment on this item, it's 949-270-8165. And staff, please, your presentation.
Good evening, Chair Wagenen. Commissioners, Matt Schneider, Department of Community Development. So just before I get too far into the ordinance amendment, I wanted to give a little background and context. There's a lot of legal history related to this subject that really informs much of what we're doing. Over the last decade, there's been several cases related to tattoo establishments and their zoning, and we looked at those closely when crafting the ordinance. One of the important takeaways from that group of cases is that tattoos are considered protected free speech under the First Amendment, and it places restrictions on how local jurisdictions regulate them. But I should point out that reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions are allowed. Under our current ordinance, tattoo services are considered a restricted personal service use. They're allowed in all zones. I should say, all office zones, commercial zones, except the commercial marine and mixed-use zones, subject to a minor use permit. In April 14th of last year, the City Council directed staff, based on the changing case law, to update and initiate an ordinance amendment to make a ministerial process for tattoo establishments and establish objective standards. Before I get into the details of the amendment, I should point out that we looked at a number of other jurisdictions and how they regulate tattoo establishments. We looked at our police calls for services on personal restricted uses, as well as the case law that I had mentioned, and they all went into informing the proposed changes. So under the proposed ordinance, tattoos establishments would be designated as their own use type. They would be permitted in three zones: the general commercial, the office general, and office regional. And they'd be allowed through a ministerial use process, subject to specific land use standards. There's basically two subsets of standards. The locational requirements create separation or buffer requirements. There's three different distinct requirements. One was a 1,000-foot separation between individual tattoo establishments, and that's to prevent an over-concentration. And then there's a 500-foot setback from schools and parks and playgrounds, as well as a 500-foot separation from residential structures. In terms of operating standards, the hours would be between 10:00 to 10:00. A security system that records security footage would be required. The tattooing would be required to be screened from public view. No outdoor seating or waiting areas. Alcohol or marijuana use would be prohibited. In terms of noise, signs, parking, they would all be subject to Newport Beach Municipal Code standards, as well as being required to meet the state, county, and city health regulations. So I have a map that I can illustrate how these separation requirements would be applied. And I should start out by just pointing out the five stars on the map represent the five existing tattoo establishments in the city. And then we have the general commercial, general office, and regional office, denoted with their colors on the map. Applying the first separation requirement, which is 500 feet from residential structures, you see that a large portion of the map is hashed out. Tattoo establishments would not be permitted in the zones within those areas. Then applying parks and schools and the 500-foot separation, which is represented by the black hashed line, it further restricts the areas where they'd be permitted. However, there are two locations in the city. If you look at the map insert in the upper right-hand corner with the yellow diamond, that is one location, as well as Newport Center, again with the diamond. Looking closer, this is the Newport Center area of the city where they'd be permitted under the proposed ordinance. Again, the black hashed line represents the setback from the park. The yellow area represents the areas where they'd be permitted. Slightly different view with an aerial. And the highlighted green area would be the area where tattoo establishments would be permitted. Looking at the Irvine Avenue, Bristol Street area, again, the gold area, gold, sorry, yellow area is where they'd be permitted. And again, with an aerial, the green area. I should point out that there are several multi-tenant suites or buildings within both these locations, and we estimate that between the two sites, there's approximately 150 to 200 locations where a site could be located, an establishment could be located. We did send notice to the five existing property owners and the business operators for the existing tattoo establishments. Those establishments would become legal nonconforming uses as a result of the separation requirements or underlying zoning. However, those uses would be able to continue to operate. Should they want to expand or intensify their use, they would need to amend their conditional use permit. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission exempt the project from CEQA. I should point out that a memo was distributed earlier today that noted a few edits to the exhibits to the two resolutions that were recommending be incorporated and that the Commission adopt the two resolutions. And with that concluding my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Klostermeier's hand was just quicker than yours. Commissioner Kettig.
Yes, question about the five existing tattoo parlors becoming nonconforming uses, legal nonconforming uses. If those owners chose to sell their business to someone else, would they be allowed to do that?
They would. So the entitlements run with the land. If the business were to become vacant, I believe it's 180 days, they would lose their vested right in the business, and then it would revert back.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Kettig.
Thank you, Chair. And that, follow-up with that question. Can they expand it where they are? Could they get, you know, take the whole floor instead of a half a floor?
An expansion of a nonconforming use requires a conditional use permit, and so all these five existing have existing conditional use permits, so they would have to amend that, and it would be a discretionary decision.
And my primary question is on the distances. 1,000 feet from another establishment, 500 feet from schools, playgrounds, and residential. Where did those numbers come up, come from?
We looked at several other jurisdictions, primarily coastal jurisdictions, that have made tattoo establishment ordinance amendments subsequent to the case law changes. And it seems to be, for lack of a better word, you know, a best practice that those measurements are being used. And then, at the same time, we did an analysis. We want to make sure that we have viable sites available within the city and so that we're preserving that First Amendment right.
So we couldn't expand that 1,000 feet to 2,000, for example? And the 500 to 1,000, could we?
The separation requirements could be increased or decreased. It would essentially just impact the areas of the city where they would ultimately be allowed.
Chair Wagenen, if I may. I think we want to create some opportunities for them to exist, and so we're kind of trying to find the sweet spot here. If we went up to 2,000, you know, the whole, the underlying psychology behind the separation between establishments is to ensure that you don't have these, you know, secondary effects of them being too close together and negative impacts occur. So, you know, I'm not sure that 2,000 would, you know, would resolve that issue. We think that 1,000 is probably sufficient to address that.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, Commissioner Kleiman.
I have a couple of questions, starting with the calls-for-service summary relating to the existing operations within the city boundaries and why nobody has taken issue with the fact that 2611 Newport Boulevard seems to have quite a few incidents listed there. Is that something, if they do have a conditional use permit, that can be called for review?
There is discretion to review conditional use permits. You know, the city retains the ability to review or revoke those. Quite candidly, this data was analyzed for the purpose of this ordinance update, so it's not something we regularly monitor. It would be something that would be referred to us by code enforcement or the police department, and in this case, that hasn't occurred.
I guess I'm just wondering what the threshold there is. I mean, we, as a planning commission body, approve these conditional use permits, and there's always that ability to call something for review if they're out of compliance with those conditions that are put into place. And it just seemed like a glaring issue, you know, with that one operation out of all of the existing tattoo shops that seem to be causing problems. So maybe it's just gone under the radar, and nobody's...
Commissioner Kleiman, I think you bring up a good point. I think from a staff standpoint, let us go back, talk to the police department. Let's take a look at what those calls for service are. And if we think from conversations with the police department, it warrants a review, then we'll go ahead and put it on the agenda.
Thank you. It just also seems like it affects the overall discussion, right? When you have one bad operator within the city or just generally, it changes the conversation and dialogue around this business as a practice. My other question, aside from echoing Commissioner Kettig's concern about the buffers, I understand our city attorney's comment about increasing the overall buffer between establishments. However, I do think the buffer from schools is not enough. But my overriding concern or question is, and I want to start by saying, I think staff's done a great job at the first pass of this. I think we're a bit restricted with the existing case law. And I think that staff has really addressed the main concern, which is the excessive discretion that the court outlined in their decision. So I think we're 80% there. But my question would be, what does this look like if we take out the general commercial and we focus more on office and really treat it as if it's a medical use? And so it would be a daytime operation. Obviously, you have to have certain training and certifications to operate this type of business. And it is something that breaks the skin and requires, you know, certain sterilization practices, et cetera. So to me, it's suitable and fitting for it to be, as I said, treated as more of a medical use, you know, like a day spa or even permanent makeup, tattooing-type things. Those are all daytime activities. Nobody goes to get those services, you know. Even permanent makeup, you don't go at, you know, 9:00 o'clock at night, for example. So what would that look like if you could put up the map, which was not in our staff report, so we're sort of seeing for the first time? And it's a little bit difficult to really get a handle on it, but...
It's probably, just based on the scale of the city, it's probably easier to look at it by area by area, if that's okay. I'll start, I'll just go back.
Yeah, this is the map I was referring to. So would there, the question is, would there still be sufficient opportunity if we focused on those types of office spaces? Places where you would have a dentist's office?
Sure.
Or a day spa or a doctor's office?
So the three zones that are proposed, the general commercial, general office, regional office, they all allow medical and dental by right. So there's not a distinction between those in terms of medical uses. We do have an office medical zone. It's predominantly around the Hoag Hospital area, but based on the proximity to residential, with the setbacks we've proposed, that would not provide any sites. I shouldn't say setbacks, I should say separation requirements. And so if it was, you could certainly do some combination of zones that are proposed, and it would be reduced further. I guess it would become a legal question if we have enough viable sites. And if we were trying to do it from a medical perspective, which is how I take your comment, all three of these zones require medical by right. So I don't know if there's an ability with these zones to limit that.
Okay, so thank you for that response. If we left it the way it is, but then we restricted the hours to, as I said, sort of similar medical, you know, whatever you want to call them, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., or whatever the normal office hours are for a typical medical facility or, you know, like I said, a doctor's office.
Sure, so I would defer to our city attorney's office to weigh in on this, but in terms of how we arrived at those hours, we looked at the five existing conditional use permits. Three of the five are 10:00 to 10:00. One is an hour earlier, so it ends at 9:00, and one's an hour later, it ends at 11:00. And then in looking at the other jurisdictions, the 10:00 to 10:00 seem to be the standard, so to speak. But that's not to say there isn't discretion. And again, I'll turn it over to you, Londa.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, I think that when we had looked at this, I've heard actually later is more appropriate, and then in this case, hearing earlier is more appropriate. So we're happy to hear any additional comments and so forth in terms of the hours and suggestions that you might have of what would be more appropriate in this circumstance. You know, for me, I personally would not be going to get a tattoo at 10:00 p.m., but to each his own. So happy to hear any additional suggestions and recommendations on the hours of operation.
Well, yeah, I think, as you said, it may not be the standard practice, but I thought what we were trying to accomplish here is just that, to kind of get away from the standard, because that's when you typically see these calls for service and the other secondary effects that you mentioned earlier, whether you have multiple operations too close together or you have an operating business that is close to some of the exacerbating factors, right? Like you have a bar or some other establishment that serves alcohol. You pair those with late hours for a tattoo establishment, and then you now have a problem that becomes a drain on the police resources. So that's the concern, at least from where I sit. So I, to me, I think it makes perfect sense to, again, treat it like it's a medical-type business and restrict it to daytime hours. And I think you're much more likely to see a decline in any of these secondary effects that we, I believe, are trying to limit.
We can definitely look at the table that was provided and ask PD if they can specify the times that some of those calls are made and just to connect the dots in terms of the calls for service and the hours.
Yeah, I wish Wendy Jo were still here, because I would like to have some additional breakdown or color on the summary that is in the staff report. So I don't know, maybe the Commission is open to revisiting this with some additional information, so we can make a more informed decision. But those would be my comments for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Kleiman. Any other? Commissioner Lowry.
Kind of going down the same road that Commissioner Kleiman's going down. I guess I'll start, yeah, I also looked at some of the ordinances too, and I really found, you know, Ocean Side, I don't know if you reviewed them. They were pretty detailed, and I believe it was in 2016. And kind of echoing what was in our report is also what Lauren said. They repeated multiple issues of elevated calls for service for police. You know, they were very concerned about property values. Kind of rolled over into some of the other cities that I reviewed, both up in Northern California, even in Riverside. They also restricted within 500 feet of any business that offers or sells alcohol, which kind of sounds a little bit, that sounds about right. But the way that Commissioner Kleiman was kind of alluding to or maybe a possibility is that make it more of a medical service. We have five. If you have a few more in these spaces that are really kind of more of like a medical office that they're speaking to, I think you can satisfy that freedom of expression, the constitutional amendments that are constitutional issues that we're looking at, being able to provide that, but also be able to, I think, balance that out with the concerns of at least of a lot of people that I've talked to as these issues have come up in the past about this. And so I think staff, you did a really good job. And I know you're trying to, you know, kind of head any kind of potential issues off. I thought this was good. But I like Lauren's thought about maybe taking a couple of extra weeks to think about this, because when I started really digging into it and seeing these other cities with ordinances, you did a great job, but just kind of from a Commission's point of view, maybe able to kind of think about some of those other ways that some of these other cities kind of implemented with these legal issues into their ordinances might be good to take a couple more weeks to kind of decide this, because it's kind of a big deal, I think, for the city in terms of planning.
I did want to add a couple more comments and input with respect to some of the suggestions. So private institutional is where a lot of medical uses are located. So private institutional is where a lot of medical uses are located. It has the same classification as private schools. And so we could potentially run into buffer issues, and so we'll certainly have to look at and play with the buffers to see. But we would potentially have to create a new subcategory, I suppose, for one of those to try and parse that out. The other thing that I wanted to just flesh out was Oceanside. We did certainly look at some of their studies and so forth, and we think our separation requirements are actually more restrictive. They have 500 between establishments, and then I think they have another 500-foot separation requirement, whereas ours is, you know, 1,000 for establishments and then, you know, the 500 from not only parks and schools, but also residential. So we actually think that we are being a little bit more aggressive than you'd be getting with those ordinances.
Yeah, and I can see that. And just, again, you're looking at, as I was looking at different cities, and obviously not as detailed as when you guys were putting this together, but as I was going to say, such as Riverside with, between, you know, alcohol, they also included not only primary schools and secondary schools, but also preschools, family daycare centers. So those are things I just, you know, would like to think about a little bit more. And, you know, I know this map is more interactive, but it really is a big help for us, and I'd like to look at that a little bit more before I make a decision, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Lowry. Commissioner Kleiman?
I was just going to sort of make it more official if we could have a motion to turn this back over to staff to revisit some of this. It doesn't have to be that the use is tied directly to medical or private institution, but just that the breakdown of the use is consistent with how we would condition, you know, medical use, if that makes sense, so that the hours are similar and that they mirror those for medical use. I don't know if that's making any sense. It's getting late, sorry.
That's okay. It might be helpful if, what I'm hearing is that you would like us to look at and analyze medical zones and medically typed zone properties. If you wouldn't mind looking at the operational standards and making sure that those are consistent, because that's how we would propose to regulate this. And Jim might be able to speak to how we regulate medical in terms of conditions of approval, but, you know, if you have input with respect, at least the operational standards, then that would be helpful as well.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, how do they compare to a medical use? And yes, if we bring it back, I think we would like to hear certainly from the police department in terms of what they experience so far with our existing establishments and making sure that we're addressing those concerns with whatever we are considering and potentially approving.
Commissioner Rosin?
Yeah, I like the idea of taking our time to make sure that we get it right. But one thing that stands out to me, and especially that map, which I think is very helpful and really appreciate, is what that map does is sort of tells us where they can't be or are limited. Is there a way to do it so that we can see where they could be and take that sort of role so that you see the effects of what that, those limitations are? I know that's kind of a weird question, but I think as a visual, it might be helpful to understand, okay, well, here's what we've limited, now what have we allowed? Is that a reasonable request?
Commissioner Rosin, I think that we've really gone out of our way to try to do that this evening. We started with a couple of zones, and we excluded and put separation standards to a variety of uses, and you saw the two areas that they would be allowed based upon the provisions that are being crafted today. You know, I think we can revisit those assumptions. You know, we can look at the various other aspects, daycare, preschools, and alcohol uses. I think the more separation standards we create to those uses, you know, the area that we might leave that would be available to these types of uses gets smaller and smaller. So we need to be cautious so that we have enough spaces in town so that people can have the freedom of expression. I think looking at medical, you know, most medical in town does not have any regulations or allowed uses. Most medical uses have typical office hours during the daytime, and most of them are not regulated in that way. That's just the way that the business operates. So, you know, I think what you're getting toward is that maybe the hours of operation are an important consideration, and I think we can revisit that. If 10 to 10 is too much, you know, maybe we can create, you know, a more business-friendly daytime set of hours. But I think we can revisit all of the separation standards. At the end of the day, you know, we obviously need to provide enough sites, you know, and we do feel that we have that with the ordinance in hand as a draft. You know, there are multiple tenant buildings in those areas up on Irvine near Bristol and in Newport Center here. But again, if we continue to add these buffers or make them larger, you know, we'll actually probably make it so we can't put it anywhere in town, and we need to avoid that.
Yeah, so I would say I think you summarized it quite well, and if it does turn out that that's too restrictive, then talking more about limitation on hours, I think, could be the solution. Again, just things that we would like to see more information on, and particularly, as I mentioned before, if we could hear from the police department and if we could really get some detailed breakouts of these calls for service on the existing establishments, then we could better understand if restricting hours is actually going to address the majority of the concerns or the issues that we've experienced so far. So it's that kind of information that I personally would like to see. Again, even if it's not changing the identified areas that staff's already put together. I know you've put a lot of time and work into this, and again, I think we're 80% there. But as everybody has kind of set up here so far, this map is helpful, and it's the first time we're seeing it. So there's just a number of things I think we'd like to spend a little bit more time with and get a little more information on.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
I'll chime in. I take a little different perspective on it, and I thought, looking into this, I thought 10:00 PM was too early of a closed time, and I started yelping all of the surrounding and neighboring tattoo places, and I guess 10:00 PM is the closing time, so I held back on that. But, you know, I think that having it at a location that's not medical, I think that's the allure that people go to. They want to go to a place that's in a different location than medical. So I think that, to me, is too restrictive. I did want to ask staff the thousand distance between tattoo locations, those orange, those two sites that are identified, no more than one could fit on each one of those, correct?
It's conceivable in the Irvine Avenue Bristol, if they were at the opposite extremes, you could get two, but that would be an unlikely scenario. Once one were to develop in that strip, it would only be one establishment.
Yeah, I don't think the Irvine Ranch Market's going to go anywhere for the time being. That site's too large to have a tattoo unless you're putting a thousand a day in there. But the Anacapa site, we just, you know, discussed that with the residents of Newport Center, that'll make it legal nonconforming if that got approved, or, you know, what's the cart before the horse on that one? That might not even be a viable site at some point, correct?
That's correct. The zoning, as you all know, is fluid, and it can become more restrictive or less restrictive based on residential zoning changes.
So essentially, we're discussing one, maybe two, locations that the city can have.
As opportunity sites, the way it's proposed, that's correct.
And the table that was shown in there from PD, I thought it was interesting, they used day spas as two that were the non, or three that were non-tattoo locations, and they even had calls for service. That 2611 Newport Boulevard, that tattoo location is right next to Cassidy's, and Cassidy's isn't the most, it's not a Mario establishment, let's just put it that way. So a call for service could technically be something at Cassidy's, it just happens to be in front of the tattoo shop. So, you know, that's possible. So I do agree with Commissioner Kleiman and others saying that it would be nice to have PD kind of come back and explain what those calls of service are, so we understand that. The Goppi Tattoo Place that some commissioners might have been on, that we voted for and supported, is an appointment-only-based tattoo. What's the thought of making the existing or the new-to-be locations, make them only be appointment-based only instead of walk-in? Is that something that's too restrictive, or is that something that can be entertained for future discussion?
I think that's a good thought. That's a very good suggestion.
So that, you know, could be something we entertain. So I do like the idea of coming back to this. I want Commissioner Kleiman, Commissioner Rosin, Commissioner Lowry to feel comfortable supporting something, and I do think it's important that First Amendment rights are exercised and that the city is protected, because if we go too severe on this, we set ourselves up for a potential, is unnecessary lawsuit. I would like to maybe in that next round of discussion, bring in somebody from the industry too to discuss, you know, what it is. Yeah, we posted this to existing sites, but then, you know, they're either busy or they're not interested because it doesn't affect them, but, you know, it could affect the industry the way that we make a decision. So I'd like to bring somebody in to discuss that, so that at least potentially opens up any viewpoints on commissioners, so that it's not a one-sided issue. I think that's all I had on my notes. Yeah, Commissioner Lowry?
I'm sorry, is it just protocol for us to call for a motion on this?
No, we still have to open it up to the public, and we haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, we're still going there.
And my question is, it's just, so to kind of, I think the commission, I'm sure we all see, no, but I just wanted to verify again that, so this, then we'll take this from, it will no longer be a CUP, it will go down to the next level and only be ministerial, administrative approval, correct? So is there any way that you could, if there was a maybe objection or a concern from a planning commission, that you could bring that up after it's been approved at the ministerial level? Ministerial level, I can't say that word tonight. But, you know, going forward, if this passes, it doesn't come to planning commission? I guess, well, that's, that's my question, can we call it up if we would like to?
I mean, so we do have revocation proceedings in the code. I think if we're talking about for these existing cases that, you know, revocation or some type of, you know, punitive action because they're not being responsible businesses is appropriate, then certainly we could take that action. One suggestion would be also is if we had some type of, you know, annual updates, you know, by the, similar to what we do with, let's say, the housing element update. Sorry to create additional work or suggest creating additional work for planning staff, but just, you know, to provide sort of a summary of these, the existing establishments, and this is, you know, the number of calls and so forth that we have had, and any impacts that might be created that should be brought to the planning commission's attention, so we can just, you know, make sure that our operators are operating appropriately. That would be a suggested condition that we can incorporate.
Commissioner Kleiman?
Just to clarify, I thought the question you were asking is on approval, not once it's operating, right? On approval. I think the question was, if it's approved, if an applicant comes in looking to open up a tattoo business and it fits within whatever the established parameters are at that time, it's approved by, or at the administrative level, I think Vice Chair Larry was asking, couldn't then be called for review, pulled up by planning commission?
No, if it's a ministerial permit, then it would be approved at Simone's level.
And as commissioners, we have the right to call for review of many of these items, correct?
As Assistant City Attorney said, no, it's ministerial. It's going to the counter, and if you comply with the code, then the permit's issued.
But as far as the one that...
Well, certainly, the five existing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll go back and review those, and we can definitely put those on the agenda.
But a commissioner can simply call for that too, right? Yeah, they don't have to have the staff authority to do so.
Correct.
Future ones is your, sorry. Okay, I will open the public hearing and call any member of the public that wishes to speak in the chambers. And if you're listening, phone call 949-270-8165. Is there anyone on the phone? I'll give it a few moments since I didn't announce that. And then, okay, all right, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to commissioners to, you know, continue the item or ask any further questions. Commissioner Rosin?
Just a quick clarification. I just heard ministerial and is different than a zoning administrator, and could you elaborate on that?
I'm sure this is a basic question, I'm sorry.
So the zoning administrator is actually a discretionary decision. They're empowered with discretion, and it's appealable to the planning commission. Ministerial, there's objective standards. If you meet those standards, as Simona indicated, the permit would be issued. There's, the point being, there should be no discretion involved in making the decision. You essentially can check the boxes that they comply with all the standards, versus a zoning administrator does have discretion when he's reviewing items.
Yes, it's just the discretion portion.
Correct.
That makes sense, thanks, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Commissioner Elmore?
So what I'm hearing from everybody, I think, is, and I agree, is that we should probably continue this item. So I'll make a motion to continue this item to a further date, so staff can go over all the items that everyone just discussed.
Yeah, I think that's okay, staff, as far as kind of understand where the direction of the commission was? Okay, I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
All right, call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Thanks, staff, for your hard work on that. It is a challenging topic, and I appreciate you listening to the concerns here, and I think they resonate in the community. So I think that's a good enough direction, and we'll come back and see it at some point. Thanks. Okay, last item is item number six, director's interpretation for accessory residential uses associated with hotels. That's PA 2021-096. Site location is citywide. Again, if you would like to comment on this item, please call 949-270-8165. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Wigan. Simone George is Community Development Director. I'm going to go ahead and just say a few words. You already have a detailed staff report, so I'm not going to spend too much time on this. So this is a director's determination that I have already made and published. We put it on the agenda this evening just to be transparent, and so that let the community and the planning commission know that this is taking place. If we just go back in time a little bit, you know, look at some of the challenges the city council's facing right now, and they got two big ones that are facing them. It's our housing element with all the RENA units, you know, planning for 4,800 units in the city of Newport Beach. And on top of that, you know, we just went through, and we still are in a COVID stage. So the council is tackling both of these issues on a daily and weekly basis. With the businesses and industries, one industry that the council is looking to support is our hotel industry. And to satisfy hotels, satisfy RENA, satisfy housing, the council adopted a policy, Policy K4, which I got to read it every time I say it. It's the reducing the barriers to the creation of housing. So to satisfy RENA and to satisfy some of these industries, they've adopted a policy. The policy covers ADUs, it covers mixed use, and it covers the resort hotels. So I'm just going to focus on the resort hotels. With regards to COVID, the travel and hotel industry have been affected, and that's no surprise to anybody. But as restaurants are starting to reopen, as the airlines are starting to reposition themselves, the council wants to support our hotel industry. They're looking at the low-hanging fruit. What can we do to support our hotel industry? Local travel is coming back. Our international travel is going to take many years to come back, and you're seeing that with the flights that are taking place, with the lack of flights from between Europe and the United States. Our group travel is going to take a long time to come back too because of those group conventions. And then business travel is a big question mark for the hotel industry. Everybody's been on Zoom, everybody's on Teams. Do you really need to travel as much? And so that is a big question mark. Some hotels we were already talking to are looking to reposition themselves. How do we plan going forward? How do we plan the future? And so we want to support our hotel industry. So this director's determination looks at a conversion of hotel units, maximum of 30% on a one-to-one basis to residential. There are conditions. We don't, we want to look at a TOT, you know, is there a loss of TOT? Can we make it up with property tax? It is a one-to-one. It is maximum of 30% of the hotel units. We need to look at those trip counts. We got to make sure that we're not increasing trips. With regards to our Section 423, our green light provision in our charter, that only applies to general plan amendments. This is not a general plan amendment. This does not trigger Section 423. This is... This is strictly recognizing a land use. Residential can be part as an accessory use to resort hotel. Resort hotels have amenities, right? Not every hotel is going to have these amenities. Again, this is the low-hanging fruit that we're trying to support. So looking at those hotels that have those amenities, those services, we can go ahead and convert a maximum of 30%, because that keeps the primary use as a hotel. Our general plan, our local coastal program talks about primary uses. The primary use continues to be hotel. We retain at least 70% of that hotel stays as a hotel. But we are looking at allowing these properties, some of these properties, that can go ahead and convert over to a residential use. Happy to continue in talking about this, but, you know, this is something that, you know, following the city council policy, this is a director's determination that I've already written and published, and it is out there, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Simone. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Rosin?
Question about the, the one-for-one that you mentioned. The one, you could potentially sell one room, and only one-for-one. What if the hotel wanted to make that room slightly larger for sale? Does it not give that opportunity, or?
So, you know, from a floor area standpoint, we're not looking specifically at the floor area, so yes, of course, they can make it larger, they can make it smaller. So we're not looking as, we don't, this interpretation doesn't focus on the floor area, but we are concerned about trips, right? How does the trips generate it? So we need to be sensitive about the trip count. So we've looked at our trips, we think there's, you can easily look at the trips as really a wash between the one-for-one. A large unit doesn't necessarily mean you have more people from a, from a residential standpoint. It just, it just doesn't. But we do look at it from a trip standpoint, and we want to make sure that we're not increasing trips. And we don't think that's going to, we don't think that it'll trigger a higher trip count, especially since we've been looking at the comparisons to some of the high-rise and mid-rise residential that is in some of the trip documents that we do have.
So one-for-one doesn't necessarily limit the operator to an existing room? They can reconfigure internally, but that, is it, does it tie to room count? Is that what we're saying?
It is tied to room count, and this isn't just the conversion of an existing hotel unit. If, if a hotel would like to demolish and rebuild hotel units, this interpretation does that also.
Okay, I see that distinction. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Okay, I'll open it to the public. Mr. Mosher?
Thank you, Chair Wagen, members of the commission. My name again is Jim Mosher. First of all, I appreciate the director putting this on your agenda. I probably would not otherwise have realized he was making this determination, so that transparency and visibility is good. I appreciate the wishes of the city council. I also appreciate, I'm not seeing what page it is, handwritten, page 23, seeing the appeal jurisdiction map of Newport Coast. I'd never seen that before. I don't think it's anywhere on our city website, because Newport Coast is not part of our normal local coastal program that we have. But those appreciations aside, I have a number of problems with this. I don't, in looking at the table, really understand how the director made his determination of what has resort-like qualities and what does not. And like Commissioner Rosin, I'm a little concerned that it's not just a hotel room becoming a residence, but it could be a luxury residence built in a hotel, or the hotel, a third of it could be demolished and a completely residential building put on that site. All of this seems to me inconsistent with green light. It seems to me inconsistent with our current general plan, and it seems to me inconsistent with history. Our current general plan, approved in 2006, can, most of the hotel allotments or entitlements, as they're sometimes called in it, are contained in the land use element, specifically in table land use LU2, called anomaly locations. That was in 2006, put before the voters. It specifies how many hotel rooms can be in each anomaly. It specifies how many residences can be in each. The two are not, never were, equivalent or interchangeable. In 2006, when this was about to be put on the ballot, there was a last-minute proposal that perhaps the voters could be asked to approve that table, but we could put in it a policy, or the council could, that would allow staff later to change the hotel allotments to residential allotments. Mr. Todd Ridgway, who was here earlier, was on the council at that time. He was one of the first to point out that such a policy would be inconsistent with green light, and it was not something that had been studied in the EIR. So the proposal was rejected by the council then. The current council put something on the consent calendar, this new policy K4. The public and the council did not know about it until the Thursday before the meeting where it was adopted, and it's inconsistent with a longstanding policy A18 that does not allow the credit or conversion of hotel rooms into residences without green light tracking for them. So this seems to me a sleight of hand, a general plan amendment, totally different interpretation of our general plan from what we've ever had, without claiming that it's a general plan amendment, and is totally inconsistent with all of those previous decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Anyone on the phone? No, okay. I'll close the public hearing. And any other commissioners? Commissioner Kidding?
Simone, real quick, would these be sold, leased, or timeshareed, these units?
They can be sold or leased, not timeshareed.
Oh, all right.
But they have a property right to sell it or lease it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Elmore?
I just want to, what we're doing here is, it's consistent with council policy, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're just following council policy?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then in terms of the green light, it's, I mean, I feel like there would have to be a general plan amendment for a green light vote?
That's correct. Section 423 is specific towards general plan amendments.
And there's no general plan amendment?
That's correct.
Yeah, all right. Thanks for your hard work, appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I think this is outside-the-box thinking from the council. I appreciate it. I think it hits three areas. It helps the hotel industry, provides housing, and it also puts money in a pot that can go to, you know, homeless or to transitional housing or affordable housing areas. So I think that that kind of does a lot of the things that we're trying to figure out with this whole RENA discussion. So applaud the council and staff for coming up with that. Any other comments? Okay, that's just a receive and file, correct? No actions taken?
That's it, there's no action.
Okay. All right, I'll move on to the next item, and that is staff and commissioner items. Item number seven, any motions for consideration? Seeing none, I'll bring it to Mr. Campbell for a report by the Community Development Director, or requests for matters which planning commission member would like to be placed on a future agenda.
Thank you, Chair Wagen. I'll keep this brief due to the lateness of the hour. I just wanted to let you know that the city council did review the draft housing element last week, Tuesday evening. We had a study session, so we were there for about two hours discussing the variety of policies and the residential scenarios, if you will. So the council wanted staff to take a look at accessory dwelling units, to kind of increase the production of that, and so we're examining that. They also asked staff to kind of readjust the density and distribution of the units throughout the community a little bit better, and so we're examining those issues as well. So, you know, with that input from the city council last week, you know, we've been working with our consultants, and we're going to be updating and coming up with a revised scenario, if you will, based on their direction. And so we'll be bringing back a revised housing element, have a public workshop in July, and then bring it back to the city council in July, and then we'll just proceed forward. So it's a little bit of a pause, so we're going to be taking about a 60-day kind of pause in the processing. It should not affect our overall schedule, so we'll be able to bring the, the housing element on, on schedule, probably towards January of next year, so it's still within the window that there won't be a penalty. So I just want to kind of keep the commission informed on that, and you will see the revised housing element. I think we've got it scheduled that you would see it in November of this year. So anyway, with that, that's my report.
Any commissioner comments? I did want to ask about the one item that was heard also at the council. That was the Mayor Avery's call for review on that project that this commission approved. Do we know, are they coming back with revised plans, or is it going to be a brand-new plan, or?
Sure, I probably should have brought that in to your attention as well. They did have a fairly lengthy public hearing on the 2510 Coast Highway Wick mixed-use project. So, so at the end of the day, the city council asked the applicant to think it long and hard about redesigning the project, and the applicant is doing so. So we do anticipate, they also continued the project consideration to the end of the month. The applicant is taking this time to kind of reevaluate the project, and will likely make some revisions to the project to address some community concerns about design and the height of the building, and we do, and the use of the commercial spaces, and that will likely come back to the city council in, probably in later June for, for final consideration.
So more like a revised plan than, than a redo?
It'll be more of a revised plan.
Be different than what the 150 Newport Center, or the project we heard today? That was kind of like a restart and resubmital. This one will be a continuance more so?
Yeah, it'll be a change to the project that's designed, that the current design, so it won't be a start and restart, if you will. So it'll be just a variant of that, of the project that you saw. We haven't actually seen the revised plans yet, but it will be coming forward, and then we'll be taking it back to the city council.
Do you anticipate it coming back to us at some point, or will it only be addressed at council level?
At this point in time, we're looking to have, leave it at the council level at this point.
And then do they plan on having some type of, once the new plans are introduced, to just have the council meeting, or do they plan to have some type of release to the public about what that plan's going to be, so they can kind of see it before the council sees it?
We haven't, we haven't planned how the rollout will be, because we don't know when we're going to get the plans and the revised project description, but I think notice to the community would be warranted, so that, you know, the community has ample time to review the changes.
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't know when they're going to be handed to me yet.
Gotcha. Okay, sorry, jumping the gun. Okay, I'll ask anyone from the audience, want to comment on any of that? Okay. Seeing none, any commissioner request for future gen. items? Seeing none, I'll move on to item nine, requests for excused absences. Any absences? All right, we're adjourned.